Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, February 1st, City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico. Counselor Kane. Counselor DeBona. Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan. President Liang.
Present.
I see Counselor DeBona on. Counselor DeBona? And you have seven members.
Present.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If everyone could just mute themselves so that we can have a moment of silence in honor of all the women and men who are currently serving both here and abroad, as well as keeping in mind all the frontline workers who are still fighting the pandemic. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you read the open meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those presented at Dean and Gollust impermissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020 orders, it's running certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20. The Quincy City Council is holding this city council meeting via remote radio conferencing services, and it's being aired on Quincy Access Television, QA TV, Channel QA TV 9, Government Access. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
First item on the agenda is honoring of the COVID-19 heroes, Department of Planning and Community Development.
Thank you. So I'm super, super excited, and I feel like this is long overdue, to have the opportunity to honor planning and community development. I have a lot of information that I've obtained over the last year in working with them, in coordinating with mainly the small business community here in the city, but I don't know how much of that information has been shared out with the public, and so I wanted to take the opportunity to have them come in front of us tonight. And before I turn it over to them, I do have some information with this, a small blip of some of their achievements that they've done this last year. So I'm going to start from the beginning and just let folks know that just within one week of Baker declaring a state of emergency in response to the pandemic, and in collaboration with the mayor's office, the city's Department of Planning and Community Development jumped into action to develop an immediate, two-pronged local response to the pandemic. First, it was to develop a rental assistance program, targeting workers in the hospitality industry. And then second, it was to develop an emergency grant program for all the small businesses that we have here. With respect to the first part, the rental assistance program, PCD developed policies and procedures based on the department's existing rental assistance program that they have under federal emergency solutions program. This program design was shared with the Quincy Chamber of Commerce and Quincy Community Action Programs, who administered the program. The program ran from March to June of 2020, and in total, they helped almost 400 households, and QCAP alone assisted almost 100 households. With respect to the second phase, which was the small business grant program, Planning and Community Development developed a program designed based on best practices from other communities who had also administered a similar program. However, since this was brand new for this department, it required the development of policies, procedures, workflows, and execution that didn't previously exist. And thanks to the critical and creative thinking skills of the department's principal planners, finance director, the program was developed at work speed utilizing a paperless application process, which made it really easy for all the small businesses here to apply for the program, as well as make sure that it was a safe space for them to apply with their private information. And it was efficient and effective. From the date of the application, when it closed, until the date when checks were issued, it was only 21 days in between. So just think about that kind of turnaround and what that meant for these small businesses. And it was possible because of the dedication and hard work of 11 different staffers who worked collaboratively to turn this around so quickly. In summary, PCD allocated nearly $2.5 million in grants to almost 400 businesses here in the city. The average grant size was $6,500, and almost 90 businesses, which is about 25%, received a maximum grant of $10,000 each. For most businesses, this meant that it saved them from closing up shop. Forty-one of these businesses were women-owned, and 30% were minority-owned. And again, here in this city where we have such a large minority population, this was huge in making sure that we're sustaining the local economy. This program that was put into place is considered to be a regional and national model, and our senior principal planner Liz Manning and finance director Neil McColl has actually given presentations about the city's response to Southern New England region of the American Planning Association and to the National Community Development Association. In addition to these two emergency response programs, PCD also led the effort to create the temporary expanded outdoor dining permit program, which provided 55 dining establishments with the opportunity to use the streets, the sidewalks, and the parking for social distancing purposes. I don't know about all of you, but I love taking advantage of those over the summer and warm months. And you know, just from what I can tell, even when it starts to get a little bit cold, folks are still taking advantage of that. And so that was a huge benefit to, again, sustaining the economy here. They also coordinated the effort in providing free live entertainment for some of those establishments. And this, again, was a collaborative effort, not just with those in the department, but also from corporate sponsors here in the city as well. They created and still maintain to today an online restaurant guide so that all of the residents and customers can see which restaurants are open, when they're open for takeout, when they're open for dine-in, and when that needs to change based off of what's happening in the world these days. The department also created a financial resource guide for these businesses, and I will just point out that they did all of this in multiple languages, which is a huge, huge, huge piece for us here in the city to make sure that all resources are translated. And they distributed weekly newsletters. They participated in Quincy Chamber Town Hall meetings, weekly town halls with Lieutenant Governor Polito, Secretary Canili, and the SBA, which is the Small Business Association. They've coordinated and hosted monthly virtual workshops since October to help with PPP loans, how to process all of that, how to coordinate with your banks, how to do the forgiveness process. And on top of that, with the PPP loan, they provided advice and guidance to business owners about this program. This directly resulted in over 1,000 businesses receiving the PPP funding up to $150,000. There was an average of about $34,000 that each business got, and none of that could have been possible without this department taking them through that. Over, I'm sorry, over $42 million was provided to Quincy business owners under this program and saved about an average of five jobs per business. Under the Mass Capital Growth Program, 189 Quincy businesses have received over, get this, $7 million in grants. That's just, again, a blip of what they have done during this pandemic on top of their regular duties just in these departments. And so, again, this is such an incredible effort from these folks. This team that, you know, exists in both of these departments and working collaboratively, and it's long overdue for us to take this opportunity to just say a flat-out thank you. Thank you, thank you so much for all that you've done. I'm super proud and excited to have both Sean Glennon and Maureen Geary here today. I'd love to turn the microphone over to you both as well, and just again, give an opportunity for you guys to talk about some of the work that you've done in addition to some of the things that I've mentioned, because there's so much that you do that none of us even know about, but you've really sustained the small business economy here in the city, and we're so grateful to you. So with that, Sean, I'll turn it over to you first, and Maureen, I'll go to you next. Sean?
Madam President, thank you very much. And certainly on behalf of the Community Development Division, I really appreciate the kind words. I'll certainly bring that back to the team if they're not watching tonight. In addition to Neil and Liz, actually, I was chuckling a little bit because when we had this conversation last week about attending tonight, Liz and Neil were actually in the middle of a national presentation on our program. So even as recently as last week, they were talking about this to a national audience of people across the country looking to Quincy as a best practice on this particular program. In addition to them, the entire team, another highlight was Melissa Pond. Early on during this pandemic, she had reached out to members of the South Shore Hunger Network, which she has been a member of. And, you know, on the advice of Jim, who would suggest that we reach out to our partners and just let them know we're here for them and see what we could do. Melissa reached out, found out that there was a sort of a vacuum of leadership due to the pandemic and just the additional need for assistance, that they were so stretched, they didn't have anyone coordinating that effort. South Shore Hunger Network is made up of 11 communities. Melissa saw the need there, and she stepped right up. And she's been the chair of that network the past almost 10 and a half months at this point, you know, filling a void, not just here in Quincy, not just among the partners that we serve, but throughout the entire network. So you know, things like that have been ongoing. And I did want to mention, too, that projects around the city have been going, capital group of projects. I know the mayor has seen this as an opportunity, especially early on when some parks and playgrounds, other facilities shut down, he saw that as an opportunity to do some work in those areas. And so, in partnership with other departments, Ward 1, as councillor in Ward 1, we had the Germantown House, Counsel McCarthy, I'm sorry, Germantown House in partnership with Neighbor Works. We had the Pond Street Park Skate Park open and redevelopment of the Manor Community Health Center down in Hausneck, which is the flagship center, a center that opened in 1978, thanks to CDBG, the longest-running community health center in the country. Ward 2, the Washington Street Rotary, paving of Low, Alden, James, and Fowler. And Ward 4, street paving and Arthur and Nelson, which leads into Garfield and Prout. And Ward 5, Ward 6, we had some Hancock Street paving from Furnishbrook Parkway up to Glover Street, and the Welcome Young Playground, as Counsel Harris is well aware, Ward 6. And I don't want Counsel Kane to feel left out, but in Ward 3, it's the ward with the smallest square footage of low and moderate income areas. So we're a little bit stuck in what we can do in Ward 3 in terms of, you know, paving and other public facility improvements. But I did want to mention that we have been doing dozens of healthy homes projects. Some councils might know that office formerly as the Office of Housing Rehab. But we have rebranded it a couple of years ago. I received an influx of $2 million from the federal government to incorporate a lead abatement program in addition to the traditional housing rehab and first-time home fire programs that we offer. And so we offer that program throughout the city. That's something I actually wanted to mention to all of you, if you have any constituents that are in need of housing rehab projects, you know, roof replacement, sidewalk, excuse me, siding, plumbing, electrical, any sort of home improvement that needs to be done is something that we could probably help them with. We offer 0% deferred loans for seniors. Don't have to pay anything back until they sell or transfer the house. And we have a great flyer that I'd be happy to share with any of you, if you want to share it with your constituents. We also have a lead abatement program, which is a five-year deferred program, as long as the individuals in the house stay there for five years. Doesn't have to be paid back. And we have a focus for households with children that are six years or younger. And again, just want to thank you, councillors, and all our partner agencies, QCAP, Father Bill's in Main Spring, Manette, Neighborhood Housing Services, for their assistance, and of course, our fellow departments. Certainly, with respect to the Economic Development Program, we couldn't have done it without municipal finance, treasurer's office, and purchasing. They, I think they entered more vendor numbers from W9s in that 21-day period than they probably had in maybe a number of years. So thanks to our friends in DPW and Department of Natural Resources and Public Buildings, Commissioners Graziosso, Murphy &amp; Heinz as well for their support on our efforts during the past year. And we're happy to be a partner with all of you and with them.
Thank you so much, Maureen. I'm going to kick it over to you.
I think between you, Madam Councillor, and Sean, I think you covered it all. No, but thank you for having me here tonight. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate the recognition. As you had mentioned, I think it's more, it's a collaboration between all of our city departments without the mayor's office and all of the other departments in the city. We wouldn't have gotten through any of what we did. And the list of items that you had read through, between the financing and the workshops and the TEP and all of that, just, it takes a collaboration, it takes staff and teamwork to really get through that type of work. And I think we just hit the replay button because, starting now, we're going to be doing the same thing again for the next couple of months as far as providing workshops to our business community, which they're asking for. This is an outreach that we did with the Small Business Grant in putting together a survey that said, well, what is it that we can do to help you next? And the responses were, "Help us with social media. Give us some ideas on financing." You know, "What do we do with the PPP forgiveness?" So we have another series of workshops coming up in the next couple of months that can help our business community get through the next few months and understand how to survive, is what we're trying to get them to do. So some of the other, I think that one other thing that we're going to be working on is storefront facade improvement program. We got some funding through planning or through the Community Development Department, which can help some of these business owners kind of get a facelift. Right now, they haven't been doing anything to their properties because they don't have any money to do anything. So some funding to help them kind of improve and work upon what they, you know, to try and sell their goods and enhance their retail space. I'm not sure what else we're talking about. Let me just look at my notes, sorry. Some of the state and local funding, you know, some of the state grant programs will be coming out again over the next couple of weeks. The MGCC Grants, which we just got information on, which you, Madam Councillor, just just mentioned, that there were 189 business owners with almost $7 million in grant funding, and that was spectacular to see. I was really excited that they provided that information to us in a timely manner. And there's still, there's still a program. The last program has not been awarded yet, but there were, I know there are a number of other Quincy business owners who applied for that program, so we'll see those numbers soon. So just working with our constituents and with you folks and with our, you know, our business owners in this federal and the state level, it's been amazing. And I just, I'm thrilled that we can do what we do now and hopefully help as many business owners as we can. So thank you. Appreciate your time. And welcome to our new councillor.
Thank you so much. Before I actually turn it over to my colleagues, I know Jim is very eager to take an opportunity to say a brief few words, as well as head of, you know, this department, I think, again, what he's done and the work that he has really helped to support has been really amazing. So Jim, I'll throw it over to you quickly before I turn it to my colleagues.
Thank you, President Liang. I am going to keep it brief. I just want to say I have to thank the mayor's office, the other departments, and of course, the city council for having the confidence and for supporting us through this process. We've done quite a bit. I'm going to leave it at what has already been said. We're very proud of the outcome. We've got a great group of people working here, and this is our mission. So when things like this go down, we try to step up. We step up if there's flooding. We step up with housing. That's what we do. So we're just doing what we should do, but we do it very well. And as listening to both Sean and Maureen, I'm going to leave it there. You heard what we do. I thank you, and I thank the council for having the confidence. And I thank, obviously, the mayor's office for having the confidence in us as well to get the job done. And without the quick movement from the mayor's office and from this council tasking us, then it takes a lot longer to get it done. So thanks again. I appreciate it. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
We appreciate all of you. I'd like to just open it up to my colleagues if anybody would like to say a few words. Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, folks. Good evening, Councillor Andronico. Welcome. Jim, in, you know, in only, you know, a brief time that I've been on the planning department, not only you know, in your regular job, dealing with the downtown and dealing with planning and all the things you guys get involved with city-wise, the floods that we had a few years ago, you guys were in a starring role in that movie, down at Thomas Aquinas with me, getting everybody squared away. And it seemed like you had a contingency plan already drawn up on how to attack that because everything went really quick, went really smooth, and people got a lot of help. The pandemic shows up again, the mayor reaches out to you again, and as President Liang had mentioned, you guys jump right into the fray, and it almost seems like there's another plan sitting on the shelf, dusted off from 1918, to say, you know, "We're going to use this today for a pandemic," and off you run because it's very successful. The grant money and the help that small businesses got, the the digging for grants and the digging for ways to come up with money seems to happen very quickly with you folks. You do your homework and you produce. It's a great thing to have, to turn to you folks up there, and not just on a regular daily basis for city items that we, you know, debate, deliberate, and pick apart on downtown things, but also emergency situations. Everybody steps up. Nobody says, "It's not my job." And that's the great thing, I think, about Quincy, the relationship that that you folks have with your coworkers, the mayor's office, the city council, the school committee, and everybody who's involved, Jim. So Sean and Maureen, thank you. And Jim, as always, it's a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. And let me just do a quick scan if anybody else would like to say a few words. Counselor DeBona? I'm just going to mute you. Hold on a moment.
You got me? Thank you, Madam President. Just want to say kudos and and thank you, Jim, Maureen, Sean, Neil, the whole gang over there. You did a fantastic job, obviously, with the floods some years ago, and then right into the COVID-19 pandemic. I think one of the biggest things is helping out the businesses, going through tough times with their payroll and having to shut down for a little while, and then knowing that they got up to $10,000 worth of funds through a grant. Thank you so much for that support for our businesses. They really, really needed during tough times. I know you guys have been working hard. I know some of the planning and community development throughout the city, but you guys have stepped up quite a bit over the over the pandemic. I think that today was the first case of COVID. So we're on our one-year anniversary of it, and then obviously, we got into March, which is a month, a month from now. So we're coming up on 12 months, and hopefully, we can get this vaccination in order and help all the departments. But thank you for your collaboration with the other nonprofits and your other departments, and thank the mayor for picking some good folks, good people. But thank you all for all your hard work and collaboration with each other. So thank you, Madam President. Have a good night.
Thanks, councillor. Next, we're going to go to Counsel Harris.
Thank you, President Liang. I just want to say thank you to Jim, Maureen, Sean, everybody in your department. You're doing a fantastic job. And it's incredible. I can remember dealing with Sean when I first got in office, just to get a something that was asked for, getting a bus shelter right down by the Moorings, by East Quantum Street. And that was, that was like three weeks, four weeks into being on the council and and helping me and doing everything that you can, and everything you've done as far as helping the businesses. And I can't say enough about Welcome Young Park. Welcome Young Park is such a you know what, you only have to, having walked down the street before and after, it only can tell you when I saw it packed with young children, in a safe place, having having fun. And I think that it was, and this was pre, unfortunately, I haven't been down there since since things really got hot. But it, that park is extraordinary, and I can't thank you enough for everything you do. Jim, and again, Sean and Maureen have worked together on so many things and talked. And Jim, you've helped me through some of the projects that, you know, that I, you know, as the department head, you've done a great job helping helping a council like myself when a tough project is coming up. So all my best to all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, councillor. Okay, let me just do one more quick scan if anybody else would like to see. Councillor Andronico?
Thank you, President Liang. You know, I just wanted to chime in real quick and extend a thank you to Jim, Maureen, Sean, and the entire Department of Planning and Community Development. I think to be able to get those programs up, you know, the rental assistance for those in the hospitality industry, and some emergency relief funds to our small businesses, I think we had mentioned, over 400, two and a half million dollars, as President Liang had mentioned, up and running within just the first few weeks after Governor Baker declared a state of emergency, speaks to the dedication that all of you and everyone in your department has to their job in their effort to make sure that everyone in Quincy remains whole throughout the pandemic. And I think it's speechlet to that dedication and the values that we have as a city in looking out for your neighbor. So I just wanted to say thank you for all your work that you've done and that you continue to do for everyone in our community.
Thank you, councillor. I'm going to do another scan here. Okay, I think that's it. Again, thank you so much on behalf of all of us in the council for all the work that you've done in keeping people in their homes, keeping the doors open on businesses here in the city. And on top of that, the work that you continue to do year in and year out with your jobs. So just know that we are all here to support you with whatever you need. And yeah, thank you. Be safe tonight, and hopefully, we'll be able to see each other in person soon.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Next item on the agenda is number one, The Quincy City Council hereby confirms the mayor's at-large appointment of Scott S. Campbell of 41 Rockland Street to the Quincy Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. This appointment, filling an unexpired term, is effective immediately and will continue through the first Monday in February of 2026.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. Walker before we move forward on this. Chris?
Reun, Madam President. These are traditional appointments, this item and the next item. They're appointments by the mayor and confirmed by the council. Mr. Campbell's been on the Housing Authority Board for a couple of years now, I believe, and this is a reappointment to that position.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve or any questions, Counsel McCarthy? Okay, do we have a second?
Second, Bill Harris.
Second by Counsel Harris. Any questions on this appointment? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan. President Liang.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, Counsel DeBona would like to be recorded as a yes vote, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item on the agenda is number two, 2021-009, Order of Nomination of Park and Recreation Board Appointments.
Thank you. Counsel Phelan?
Thank you, Madam President. Looking to put in nominations for three individuals. I'm going to put them all in. I believe we can do that. And I'm going to put the three names in and then then ask for, then, you know, I believe we can vote for them all at once. We've done it in the past. The three names I have for the Park and Recreation Board, Paul McGolley, Kevin Isdale, and Thomas Lester. I answer those names into nomination.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Counsel Phelan for all three names, second by Counsel Palmucci. Any questions on this item?
I move to close nominations.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, Madam Clerk, could you call? And we could just do a yes vote across the board for folks. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Number three, 2021-010, A Gift for $360 from the Sons of Italy's to Veteran Services.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Debona. Any questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico?
Yes.
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Debona?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci?
Yes.
Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Okay, next item on the agenda, please.
Next item is number four, 2021-011, A Gift for $130 from various donors to Veteran Services in memory of John Butch Mahoney.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Counsel Debona. Any questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico?
Yes.
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Debona?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci?
Yes.
Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we're going to approve previous meeting minutes, and again, just as a reminder, we're approving all three January meetings, so January 11th, the 19th, and 25th. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Phelan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCarthy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all three minutes passed. Thank you. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Madam Clerk, I believe you have them.
Yes, thank you. I do have a utility request to refer to Public Works Committee for Schedule and Advertising. Grant a location for Mass Electric Verizon for 202 Copeland Street. There are also some traffics to refer to ordinance for advertising. Ward four, add all-way stop at intersection of Brooks Ave and Liberty Street, add a four-way stop at the intersection of Brooks Ave and Robert Street. Ward five, add four-way stop intersection at Clotik Ave, Dennis Ryan, Foster Street, and Chestnut Street. Ward six, add handicap parking at 11 Dipmare Street, add a four-way stop sign at Huckins Ave, intersecting with Bellevue Road.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, any other communications? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Andronico for this question. Counselor?
Thank you, President Liang. You know, considering I've given a lot of speeches on this recently, I'll do my best to keep this brief. I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues for the opportunity to join you as a counselor. And, you know, although I'm coming into this position in unusual circumstances and unusual times, I did want to say that I have a great amount of respect for the office and the responsibilities that it comes with. I think each member of this council brings something to the table that's unique to them, and I strongly believe that helps us as a body to better represent the people of Quincy in this position. And, you know, aside from that, I think that I'm not alone in saying that what we have seen nationally over the last few years has been a little disappointing. You know, we've heard some divisive rhetoric that's driven us further apart within communities, and we've seen elected officials that have refused to support a good policy just because they didn't like the individual that proposed it. But my pledge to all of you is that I'll always support a policy if I believe it can make the city of Quincy a better place to live, to work, or to raise a family. So I'm looking forward to working collaboratively with all of you to do just that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Counselor, and welcome to your first meeting. It's in the middle of a snowstorm, so I bet you're already sort of diving right in with the phone calls and the emails from folks, but in speaking with each of my colleagues at different points since your appointment, and, you know, I just, I know that each of them, you know, are excited to work with you, as am I, and so, yeah, on behalf of all of us, welcome to the council. Hopefully, we'll be able to see you in person before the end of the year, but even still, we're excited to have you here, even if it's in a virtual space. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, any other communications and reports? Okay, seeing none. Moving on, unfinished business and proceeding meetings? Seeing none. Reports of committees? Counsel Mahoney?
I just wanted to give an update on the Airbnb. I have been in touch with Steve Durk, and he's working with the State House right now to try to get access to the list so that we can see exactly where the Airbnbs are located, specifically in residential A. He's running to some, it seems to be taking him longer than he thought it was going to take, so he's at for an extension to March 1st. He'll come back to the council March 1st. Hopefully, we'll have the list at that point, but in the meantime, he is working on the ordinance, the secondary ordinance to amend the zoning code to reflect the council order that we're working on. So I just wanted to give that update, that, you know, we are working towards getting that completed. And then also, I didn't know if this is the time where, I always mess this up, where I can actually put, I wanted to schedule some, another meeting. I think it might be after this, though.
Yeah, we can do it during the scheduling.
All right, thanks. That's just my update.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other reports of committees? Okay, seeing none. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Counsel McCarthy? And then we'll go to Counsel Mahoney.
Thank you, President Liang. Overall, I think it was a tough couple of weeks in Quincy with the passing of a number of people who had an impact on the city. Particularly, I have two folks that I was both close to. Start off with one with a longtime Howes Neck family, the Forresters, they lived on, they still live at 41 Bird Street, Mary Forrester. Got sick over the last couple of weeks. She was very healthy, very active, but she had respiratory issues and got COVID, got pneumonia, and we lost her in two weeks. The Forresters, she grew up, that's Sullivan and Adam Shore, and then moved uptown to Howes Neck, where they've been their whole life. And I just want to make sure everybody keeps the Forresters in their prayers and thoughts, especially her husband, Arthur, and her kids, Jimmy, Mark, Julie, and Gail. A great family that I grew up with and I'm very close to. So COVID really did a number on this beautiful lady, and it was only in two weeks. The second one is Elaine Dwyer's husband. Elaine served, and I know a lot of us here know Elaine, served with myself and Mrs. Mahoney for a number of years on the school committee, probably about a decade. Her husband, Mike, was a northeastern policeman for over 40 years, and he, over the last few years, fought the good fight with cancer, but it finally caught up with him, and he was also buried last Friday at St. Brendan's in Dorchester. If one thing, Mike was the quiet one that walked the dog and smoked a cigar, and Elaine could talk tobacco off a tree if you let her get going, but they made a great couple. And I used to see him on C Street all the time, walking his dog and up in the Broad Meadows area, a super guy, Mike Dwyer, but cancer caught up with him, so please keep the Dwyers in your prayers and thoughts there. They were a great couple, great family. Both her daughters are teachers in the Quincy school system and do a great job, and I'm sure Elaine will bounce back, but those two folks in Ward one were longtime, longtime Ward one community people that were involved, so prayers and thoughts with them. Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll keep their loved ones in our thoughts. Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Mahoney?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just wanted to also mention Mike Dwyer as well. I mean, one of the things that we, we all do this, get elected and we work for the city, and we get to know each other in a different capacity and our families in a different capacity. And Mike, as Mr. McCarthy just said, was a quiet person, very gentle, but very supportive of his daughters and also of Elaine. I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to be an elected official at times, and he was always very supportive of her during the good times and the bad times because it can be a tough job, whether it's on the school committee, council, mayor, as we all know. This is a, it's, it takes a lot of time away from your family, and you need supportive people around you, and Mike was that for Elaine and for his girls. And I do, my heart goes out to the family. He was taken far too young, and I just, I feel terrible for him, so thank you very much for letting me share those thoughts. And with that, I also have the honor of speaking tonight with a heavy heart, and it's an honor because Archie Wahlberg was a very special person. He's 93 years old when he passed just last week. He was a proud World War II vet. He served in the United States Army, and he participated in the liberation of Italy. And Italy was a very special place for him as well. He was a beloved husband and friend of the late, best friend of the late Rosemary Wahlberg, a romance that lasted over 66 years. He was a devoted father, cherished grandfather of 21 grandchildren and 18 great-grandchildren. Archie and Rosemary became involved in community service. They shared a love for helping others, and they devoted their lives to giving back. Archie was an active member of the Quincy Democratic City Committee, but she served as vice chair. I had the privilege serving as vice chair alongside of him. He was a founding member of the Manette Health Center. As we learned tonight, Manette Health is a critical part of what we have here in Quincy. We have Archie to thank for that. He chaired the Elder Housing Corporation. It was instrumental in building the moorings at Swanum Gardens, which benefited military veterans. In an honor of Archie and Rosemary's many years of dedicated commitment to the missions of Quincy community action programs, they were honored in 2012 with the Head Start Learning Center, which was dedicated in their names. The Rosemary and Archie Wahlberg Early Learning Center is a legacy of their dedication to the city of Quincy, a city that they came to love. Archie was an avid cook. He shared recipes with me. He had a love for food. He was a fastidious dresser. He liked to dress up, and both him and Rosemary always looked fantastic. They took pride in their appearance. And Archie, for those of you who don't know, appeared in cameo roles in his nephew, Mark Wahlberg's films. He was a film buff, and he relished those experiences. I think he was also on the reality show as well. Most of us, most of us knew Archie. He was a special person, but he was the most dedicated to his family, especially to his grandchildren, his great-grandchildren, and his many nieces and nephews. He became the family patriarch, which he cherished that role, and he loved to talk about his family, and it made him very proud. But most of all, it was an honor for me to call Archie my friend, and I will dearly miss him. So thank you for the opportunity to share those thoughts with you about Archie Wahlberg.
Thank you so much, Counselor, and both he and Rosemary were just legendary with their impact on the city, and so I appreciate you bringing them up tonight. Thank you so much. Any other presentations, petitions, memorials, and remonstrance? Okay, seeing none. Motions, orders, and resolutions? Seeing none. We're going to go to scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Counsel Mahoney?
Thank you. So, I think it's next meeting, which I have a date, I think it's the 8th for the next meeting. What I was hoping to do is bring out of ordinance, order number 2020-37, which is the ordinance to discuss employment advertisements and vacancies. And then I also would like to take out 2020-51 to discuss at that meeting as well, which is an amendment to the business certificates, and then 2020-133, which is the definition of affordable housing. And if I could schedule that meeting for February 8th at 6:30?
You got it. So we'll have that ordinance committee meeting February 8th, next Monday at 6:30 p.m., followed by the regularly scheduled council meeting. Any other scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings? Okay, seeing none. I know all of you are eager to get to your phones and be responsive to your constituents, and I just hope that everyone stays safe throughout this week. I don't know how crazy things will get, but I know you'll be out there in full force, so just please be careful while you're out there. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I was going to say, nobody wants to adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, and please be safe.
Have a good night, everyone. Bye.